This is the April 19th, 2022, regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledges of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Dr. Morrison, are there any special recognitions or presentations tonight?
There are, Dr. Fuller. We are going to hear a lot about Goal Four and our commitment to attracting, growing, retaining great employees here in Montgomery ISD. A big component of Goal Four is our commitment to grow leaders within our district. And so, one of the initiatives this year was headed by Dr. Weatherly, so I'm going to ask him to come up and recognize some very special guests that we have in attendance this evening.
Good evening, Dr. Fuller. It's the board member, Dr. Morrison. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight, our Leadership Academy participants. A while ago, a few people walked in and saw such a big crowd, they said, "What is going on?" And what is going on is our opportunity to recognize some leaders, not future leaders, but leaders that we already have in our district. It was a part of the strategic plan that we said, "How can we grow our own?" And so, we put out an application process to the entire district, and then they had to fill it out and had to answer some SA questions, and it was a blind read, so we didn't know who was applying. And so, we had 25 people that ended up being chosen for our initial academy this year. And so, the leadership topics that we followed included all components of the strategic plan. And so, they were able to learn about communication and finance and so forth and so on. And so, I'm very proud of this group, very proud to be able to present them to you tonight, because in their own little place and space, each and every day in Montgomery ISD, they are leading students and leading others. And so, I'm going to call their names. When you hear your name, if you'll please come up on stage, because we want to be able to take a picture with you and the board here. And so, I want to present to you tonight, Mrs. Doreen Schrader, Donnette Key, Teresa Tipton, Jennifer Ellis, Lisa Miller, Lauren Coughlin, Lindsay Duke, Laura Crowe, Marie Villa, Bonnie Opperly, Jessica Stubbs, Melanie Tullis, Nicole Morgan, Tony Tennyson, Amanda Cook, Lisa Foster, Nicole Patillo, just like good educators, all lining up, Dana Upton, Kimber Lehman, Kelly Coaches, Linda Bailey, Louis Summer. And as we affectionately called this group, you might notice that there's... I don't know why this group is laughing, but you may notice, just by looking, there's one gentleman, and so, we affectionately...
Do you know that?
Oh, and it might also be Linda's birthday, so happy birthday, Linda.
She's got on the ground.
She's going incognito, but we affectionately called this group Ladies and Lewis. And so, Louis was representing a lot of guys, but I want to tell you how proud of this group that we are for participating. And I will tell you what they have, teachers in general have gone through in the last two years and being tired. I will tell you, we asked them to come at the end of the day for two hours, and I think they would agree with me when I tell you that they left energized and ready to lead. And so, this is the 2021-22 Leadership Academy. Let's give my hand.
We're going to do the whole cheerleading squad thing, so you guys are going to have to come together. And then, if the board can stand on the... Teachers try to stay down, we'll let the board stand behind. So, ladies, try to make your way. If you're shorter, make your way to the middle. Louis, just like this. This is how you do it. Perfect. Look at you guys. You did it all by yourselves. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to say sincere thank you to that group. And you're the future of our district. You're the future of this profession. And I know it's been a lot of long hours. Thank y'all for doing what you do in the day and then doing what you do afterwards. And, you know, I just want to leave you with the thought that what happens next in our profession and education is in your hands. So, thank y'all for stepping up and being a part of that solution. Are there any registered public... First of all, are there any more special recognitions?
No.
Okay. Are there any...
Other than Linda Bailey's birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Should we make a motion?
Going to sing happy birthday? Happy birthday on another trip around the sun, Ms. Bailey. All right. Are there any registered public comments, Ms. Alcantara? There are no public comments. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen on the board, we will move on to consent agenda. Is there a board member that would like to pull any items off of the consent agenda for discussion? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as defined.
All right. Mr. Hopkins, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. The consent agenda carries as presented. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now on to action item 6A, consider approval of learning management system which aligns with goals 1 through 5.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. And we are going to continue our conversation, our journey on technology in Montgomery ISD with the next step of where we are planning, which is your consideration of a learning management system. And so, we're going to ask our Director of Technology, Amanda Davis, to come forward and share what we're asking for you to consider, along with Diana Teal, who is our instructional technology coordinator.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Tonight, Technology Services brings to you our recommendation for a learning management system for the 22-23 school year with a five-year non-appropriation contract. Throughout this last year, Diana Teal has worked closely with three LMS pilot groups, gathering feedback, working with each vendor, and truly understanding where the district is and which platform will help us achieve our strategic plan goals. So, tonight, she is going to present to you our recommendation for your consideration.
Hi, good evening. I'm Diana Teal, Instructional Technology Coordinator, and I am super excited to talk to y'all tonight about a learning management system for Montgomery ISD, our process that we took to choose an LMS, and our plan moving forward. So, as you may remember, back in October, Amanda shared with you our strategies to meet district goal number one, academic achievement, to put forth a vote to you all on a decision to implement a three-to-five-year contract on a robust learning management system, which is what I'm going to do right now. But first, what is an LMS? So, a robust LMS can offer a variety of solutions. It provides the framework for the learning process, housing, delivering, and tracking all content. It's a one-stop shop for students to access their lessons, their assignments, and their grades. It fosters and encourages collaboration and communication between educators, parents, and students. And it tracks student progress, which allows educators to personalize student learning and equips campus and district leaders with the information they need to make data-driven decisions. So, the process. Over the course of this year, we trialed out three LMSs. The first one was Google Classroom, which we used as a baseline, because all teachers used it during COVID. We also trialed out Canvas, which we implemented this year, and Schoology, which was provided by TEA. During this trial, we pinpointed and really decided what is critical for us in an LMS. What does MISD need? Scalability is crucial, because we grow, because as we grow, which we will, we all know we will grow, our needs will change. And we need an LMS that can change and grow with us. Next year, we are implementing a new student information system, Skyward, which needs to be able to sync with our LMS. So, student information, data, and grades can sync. We don't want our teachers to assign an assignment and then grade it in the LMS and then have to open up gradebook and type in those grades again. We want it to be seamless and sync. Ease of use is of high importance, as you can imagine, when choosing any program or system, especially when choosing a robust LMS, which leads us into excellent customer service and training. We want to make sure our staff is well-supported, something that, as you can see by the smiley faces and frowny faces and flat faces, only Canvas offered. We had our own district rep who was there for us at any moment we needed, as well as monthly implementation meetings with Canvas. We did not receive even a callback from Schoology. The ability to work with dual drives is also very important here at MISD, because we are a dual-drive environment. Our teachers use Google Drive and Microsoft. We want them to be able to have the choice to upload assignments from PowerPoint or from Google Slides. We don't want to narrow them to only using Google, which is what Google Classroom would do. And saving the very most important for last, the ability to integrate with other platforms. MISD has a wide variety of resources and textbooks that our teachers can use. We want to make sure that we can connect those third-party platforms and textbooks to Canvas, which will allow the district the opportunity to save costs in the future if we do use online consumables. So, out of all those green smiley faces, we are recommending Canvas, but don't take just our word for it. Just take a look at some of this feedback that we got from the Montgomery ISD pilot teachers. All the feedback was positive, highlighting how Canvas is user-friendly with tons of capabilities. It is already used, if you don't know, it's already used in multiple universities, such as Rice, A&amp;M, Baylor, UT, and Lamar, and HCC, Houston Community College, which will prepare our students who choose to continue their education past high school. And you can see that Canvas is already used in the reading academy, so the majority of our elementary teachers already have hands-on experience using Canvas. So, our four-year plan. All of the things that make Canvas a robust full LMS is also what makes it intimidating to some. So, that is why we are rolling this system out over the course of four years and beyond, working hand-in-hand with Canvas to provide in-depth training and support. So, year one. Year one is our initial exposure year. Next year, teachers and staff will be learning a whole new SIS and ERP system, and we want to be mindful not to overwhelm them with another new thing, especially a big thing like an LMS. We will be working with district and campus leaders to create an implementation plan, create courses and templates for teachers to use in the future, as well as providing tier-one support for all staff. Year two, we will roll out Canvas to our secondary campuses, encouraging teachers to use Canvas at least once a week with their students. We will also be working closely with the curriculum and instruction department on how to pool data to make those data-driven decisions. Year three, we will be doing the same thing with elementary, rolling it out to the elementary campuses, encouraging teachers to use it weekly, as well as beginning to integrate online textbooks. And then, year four and beyond, we will be frocking and rolling full staff implementation for students. The students will be using the LMS, but not just students, staff too, to get PD and to enroll in PD courses. So, money. How much is this going to cost us? This current school year, we paid for our initial conversion, which included single sign-on, activation of our dual drives, and rostering through our current student information system. During this year, so that first price, during this year, we were focused on building our environment to mirror what teachers and students would expect if we were to purchase Canvas. So, that's where we can get a real trial, and they can get in there and really feel what it's going to feel like if we were to purchase it, not a light version like an app, where you can have the light version and you want to pay. We have the full, good trial. Year one, that cost, we will be paying, you see, the price is lower for year one, because we are only paying for half of our student population. And we're also be converting from our current SIS to Skyward, but this aligns with our year-one plan to build teacher capacity before expecting students to use this LMS. However, any future-ready teacher will have the option to use it. Year two, we will begin paying for all student population, which is why you see that price jump. And year two, also, price also includes 720 hours of professional development provided by Canvas. Year three, you see a bit of a dip, and that's because by year three, it is our goal to have enough expert teachers and staff here at MISD to provide that ongoing PD for any staff that still may need it. And then, year four and five, as well as all years, are estimated for inflation and population growth. There's also some optional future purchases, just like any program or app. You know, there's always add-ons. So, these are some of the add-ons that we could tack on to our Canvas system, which includes Studio Cloud. And what Studio Cloud allows teachers to do is make videos, tutorial videos, whatever, lessons, and then add, make them engaging and interactive, adding questions, open-ended questions, spots where they can interact. Mastery Connect is the district-wide assessments, and Analytics is evaluating those assessments. And those work hand-in-hand, very similar to Edge Euphoria, what we're already using. And then, the Leadership Academy, the Technology Services, is looking at implementing this piece during the summer of year one to train all campus and district leaders on the value Canvas brings to data-driven decisions. Questions?
I did have one question. You kind of touched on my second part, but the first, how many years do you expect to use it past implementation, four years? Is it a 20-year program, or is it year to year? I mean, what do you expect?
And so, the beauty of an LMS is that it is ongoing. So, it is, I mean, I hate to use the word forever, but...
So, we did a five-year contract to stick in a price lock. And so, after year five, we'll renegotiate that price lock to consider inflation again and population growth. And any other add-ons or whatever the district decides with the CNI group.
Two other things I would add to that. Number one, that's why we took so much time to front-load and really make sure that we were coming up with an LMS that really was what our teachers felt was the most usable and actionable in the classroom, because you don't want to replicate this more often than the consideration of every five years, because then you have to commit all that training again. And so, that was really important to us, is to make sure we select a system that really will meet the needs of our teachers and the ones that they feel will allow them to take their technology skills to the next level. The other part is really going with a vendor that has chops and history. Canvas has been around for quite some time, both serving K-12 districts and higher ed. And, you know, obviously, they iterate and improve their LMS. And so, we have an opportunity to go with a known vendor rather than some that just come about, and then you blink and they're gone. So...
Board members, other questions?
So, do we have any idea after year four, what our costs would be? Without the add-ons, I mean, are they going to come back and charge us a lot more to stay with the program?
So, that's when we would renegotiate that contract. Currently, it's about a 15% increase per year, just to cover inflation costs and the cost to host us, because, again, we're not hosting this on our own internal servers. We're having to pay for that hosting. So, they're kind of rolling in those costs when they give us a contract. So, as far as cost goes, it will incrementally go up with student population and inflation, but yearly, it just depends on what we choose. If we decide to go back and only have secondary, then the cost will decrease, but it's that point.
If we had to go to another vendor after expiration, would it all be transferable, or would they lock us in like it's ours? Y'all can't transfer it?
If we go with a different vendor, then we would be paying for all of the consultation and implementation conversion fees all over again.
Right. But would Canvas allow it to transfer over to another vendor?
No, because they're completely different platforms hosted on different data centers.
But I will say, I was on a call just earlier today with our Canvas rep, and he reiterated just how personalized even this quote was. And there were many times that even after we got our initial quotes, we said, "Oh, well, let's add this piece on. Let's take this off." And they are very motivated and dedicated to Montgomery ISD and making this partnership work. And it's not like a locked and loaded, like if we needed to right now, we could call and make those adjustments. They're willing to do whatever they can to meet our needs.
And we've been working with them to build out our, kind of in alignment with our strategic plan and our initiatives that we have for technology. After, I guess, the approval of our LMS, then we'll roll in kind of the CNI version of what their goals are and how we can better align what Canvas will do for the district.
Other questions? All right. So, two questions from me. And the first one is, if you wouldn't mind telling us, what's going to be different for our kids in terms of learning because of Canvas?
Yeah. So, right now, when you go into any school and even in any classroom, some teachers are using Google Classroom. Some teachers are using Schoology. Some teachers are still using something totally different. So, as a student, imagine going into this classroom and needing to navigate to Google Classroom to find my assignments. And then, I go to this other classroom, and I have to go someplace totally different, or where did I have that assignment? Same for parents, because all of the LMSs have a parent piece. So, as a parent, in this class, I need to check this portal. In this class, I need to check, you know, for student A, for student B. What will change is that one-stop-shop across the board. So, as a student, just like when they're in college, they will go, no matter what classroom they go into, they will be loading into the exact same LMS to access all of their lessons, their assignments, their grades. They'll get instant feedback from the teacher as soon as they submit that assignment. Assessments, it is going to be, as parents, just going to that one place. So, I think that's going to be the biggest change.
Okay. And one thing that we hear a lot about when it comes to technology is customer service. And I think you had a green smiley face on that criteria. So, walk me through that. If something goes wrong and we need to get into it, I need to get into it as a parent or a teacher. So, they're calling somebody?
Yes. So, the beauty of, especially in our initial year, that tier-one support, which I touched on, but let me elaborate. So, with that tier-one support, it is 24/7 help. And I don't mean that you can just chat or have like a generic number to call. We have a Montgomery ISD. This is one of the questions I asked my rep today. And he said that we will have our own number, and when any teacher or staff member in Montgomery ISD calls that number, there will be somebody on the other end, a real person, immediately to answer it. They will know that they are from Montgomery ISD. They will be able to pull up all of Montgomery ISD, what we have going on, what we are paying for, and they will be able to immediately help them. We also, with Canvas, will be able to create, which is what we've been working on, our IT, with Canvas in those monthly implementation plans. We'll have our own help desk where we can decide what questions, like if a teacher has this type of question, where it directs them to. Does it direct them to me? Does it direct them to IT? Does it direct them to Canvas? So, we'll be able to really provide that support. That is such an important feature, you know, that we took into consideration with an LMS.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, on this action item, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Canvas Learning Management System for Montgomery ISD.
And is there a second? Ms. Portman? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. That motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right. Action item 6B, consider approval of the 22-23 compensation plan, which aligns with goals three and four.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. I have to say, in my two years here, I've never, I don't think we've ever had a more different transition from a presenter than a Diana Teal to Chris Lynn. Not sure we got that right on this, because this is really exciting, what we're ready to present. But I know Chris is going to step up, our Assistant Superintendent Happiness. We have been on a journey in Montgomery ISD. First, coming to this district last year, my entry, getting a chance to hear from this community about what they thought was great about our district. And they talked about this community. They talked about our students. But most of all, they talked about our staff. We have amazing staff, teachers, support staff, administrators. And that was the number-one thing that was listed up constantly and consistently. But what was listed up, when I asked, "What could we do better?" And that was a concern of our community, was that the gap in pay was getting so wide that we were in danger of losing these great educators and people who support education. I came back, and we did not have data to support that. And so, as you heard Diana and Amanda talk about, we make data-driven decisions. And so, we started putting together those data. And the data did suggest that there were gaps, significant gaps, between what we were paying our hard-working employees and what they could do for the same job in surrounding districts. This board took a stand that that needed to change, along with still presenting a balanced budget for your consideration in June. And that presented challenges, but at the end of the day, budgets are your priorities. And our priority in Montgomery ISD are our people. And so, what you have tonight is really, in some ways, our ask of you to front-load the budget process, because as Chris will say early and often, 85% of our budget, our operating budget, are people. It's how many people and how much we pay them. And so, what we're asking for you to do tonight is to allow us to continue the journey that you have set us on, which is to greatly enhance compensation for all of our employees to get us where we are exceptionally competitive and not in danger of losing talented teachers and talented employees because of compensation. So, I'm excited to share with you tonight the work that we have put forward for your consideration. And I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance Operations and potentially Happiness, depending on how this goes. Chris Lynn?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Dr. Fuller, board members, good evening. I am probably more like Diana Teal than you probably realize, because over the last few months, she has taken on the role of being my technology life coach. And so, we spend a lot of time together, because I need a lot of assistance. And so, she's rubbing off on me. And, you know, you noticed in her presentation, she had some numbers, so obviously, I'm rubbing off on her too.
We're going to go with that, Chris.
Okay. So, anyway, to start tonight, we want to do a little review, because as Dr. Morrison said, 85% of our general operating budget is people. It's our salaries. It's how many people we have. And so, you are making a commitment tonight, should you choose to take action, that is going to move this budget process forward, and you're going to allocate a significant amount of money towards that budget. So, we want to start with just letting everybody know. letting everybody know that we do have a budget process in Montgomery ISD. And this process, we started actually back in December, compiling all of the salary data that helped guide us to this evening. And so, we shared our salary comparisons with the board in February. And in order to start making decisions on budget and how much compensation can we provide our employees, we obviously have to know how much money we're going to be anticipating for next year. So, we did those calculations in February. We created our campus enrollment projections in March. We determined campus and departmental staffing needs. And then we're here tonight, asking for your approval of the 22-23 compensation plan. As we leave here tonight, we move into the actual budget development process with our campus leaders and departmental leaders. We will present to you in May a preliminary budget, and then ask for your final approval in June. So, we always like to start, once again, we are an educational institution, and so we want to try and educate just a little bit. Actually, it's not my responsibility to make sure the budget gets prepared every year. It's Dr. Morrison's or other designees. So, I guess that's me. Our budget must be prepared by June 19th, because we are a July 1 fiscal year, and our fiscal year runs through June 30th. The board must adopt our budget prior to June 30th. Otherwise, our employees cannot be paid in the month of July until that budget is actually adopted. The board does have the authority to amend the budget throughout the year. And we just always like to remind people in newspaper stories or websites, when you see budget surplus, that's a good thing. That means we had more revenue than expenditures. That is always our goal. Sometimes, our expenditures are more than our revenues, and that results in a budget deficit. We try and limit those as much as possible. But every now and again, those things do happen. So, last year, as Dr. Morrison and I entered the district, you know, we walked into a situation where there were some financial difficulties in balancing the budget and compensating our employees. And so, being former administrators in school districts, we knowing that 85% of the budget is people and how much we're paying them, you make some assumptions. And either you're paying your people too much, or you have too many people. We quickly found out that neither one of those assumptions were accurate. We had TASBY, the Texas Association of School Boards, come in and do a staffing review. And they identified that our schools are staffed at an appropriate level, not necessarily overstaffed, not understaffed, but commensurate with our other comparison districts. And then, they also identified, they came back to us multiple times and said, where's the rest of your central office and administrative staff? Because you must have omitted a page. While we're not asking for additional central office people, it is important for our community to know that we have significantly less administrative positions in this district than districts comparable to us across the state. So, if we're not, if we don't have too many people, maybe we were paying them too much. And so, we quickly started doing our salary comps and realized at every level, whether you were a teacher, a paraprofessional, an administrator, a bus driver, we were starting to not be as competitive in the salary market as we would like to be. So, we have identified a couple of factors that caused some of those budget challenges. And we'll cover those in just a little bit here in our presentation. But one thing, shameless plug, we always like to promote this fact, that our tax rate in Montgomery ISD is the lowest that it has been since 2005. It has actually decreased almost 11 cents over the last three years. So, as people are starting to experience the shock of their property value notices for next year, remember two things. One, Montgomery ISD does not set your property values. The Montgomery Central Appraisal District has that task. And two, the Montgomery ISD tax rate is the lowest that it's been since 2005. And that is due to the work of this board and previous boards, and making sure that this district is spending every dollar that we get in the best way that we possibly can. It's a little confusing right now, this budget year, because we're also talking about bond. And so, we just always like to use this time to educate and communicate that as we're talking about pay raises tonight, there are two distinct buckets of money. And so, the maintenance and operations is what takes care of our salaries, all of our daily operating expenses. And so, for the average citizen, this is similar to all of your household expenses. So, your fuel, your groceries, your utilities, everything that you need to operate your household. The interest in sinking rate is what pays for the bonds. And so, that $326 million bond referendum would be funded by this INS tax rate. And that is our new building constructions, our renovations, similar to a new home purchase or a new car purchase. And the reason we're bringing that up is because there are some distinct differences between these two. It's important to note that INS money cannot be used for employee salaries. So, as we're talking about pay raises and compensation this evening, we want to make sure that the community understands there is no correlation between that bond referendum that will be on the ballot starting next week to these pay raises. We cannot use INS money for employee salaries. Okay? So, as we look at those two buckets, as we said, 85% of the MNO budget supports personnel salaries and benefit cost. And I can't say it often, or emphatically enough, INS monies cannot be used to pay for salaries or other day-to-day expenses. Now, conversely, the MNO money can be used for capital needs. So, that MNO money can be used to replace school buses, can be used to replace chillers. However, keep in mind that 85% of our budget goes to people and their salaries. If we start utilizing that MNO money for those major repairs, then obviously that's going to lessen either the number of people that we can employ, or the amount of money that we can offer them for the jobs that they're doing in our district. So, we just want to make that distinction as we're going through this unusual event. So, some of the budget considerations that we've identified, on the left-hand side of the screen, you see data that shows the revenue of average districts all across the state. And so, you see how those revenues are split between federal, local, and state revenue sources. We, I said earlier, part of the things that we've identified is there's challenges with the amount of revenue that Montgomery ISD receives compared to other surrounding districts and other districts across the state. So, you can see that significant difference in the level of revenue that we receive. Ultimately, that means we have less revenue and less resources available to provide some of those most competitive salary increases and most competitive salaries. And so, we'll talk about how we're gonna meet those challenges and how we have been meeting those challenges in the last couple of years. In addition to state and state funding challenges, we also have some disparity with the federal distribution of ESER funds. And so, $17.3 billion was distributed to Texas for COVID relief. Montgomery ISD received $4 million. So, we are just a little bit bigger than Willis. So, you would have assumed that they got a comparable amount. They actually got 17. As Dr. Morrison says, we're 1-6, the size of Conroe. So, six times four, in my simple math, is 24 million. But they got 100 million. So, that compounds the challenges that we face with some of the, our ability to adequately compete with some of these surrounding districts when it comes to retention bonuses, incentives. And so, we just bring this up, not as an excuse, but just once again, to educate our community and the board about some of those challenges. So, a long way to say, here we are tonight to talk about the compensation plan. It's important, as I said earlier, to know before you make decisions like this, how much money you have coming in. And so, on the screen in front of you are some preliminary revenue estimates. Keep in mind, these things change all the time based on changing data. And so, at this time, when these were made, we did not necessarily have some of the information we have today. They will continue to change, even up to budget adoption and even beyond. But this chart basically shows that we have about $4.2 million, or we're anticipating about $4.2 million in additional revenue next year. So, how did we get there? First of all, we start with our projected enrollment. We are a growing district, as indicated by the need for this bond referendum. We have grown significantly this school year. We anticipate continuing to grow next year. And we're projecting our student enrollment to be about 9,800 students next year. The other part of that is our attendance rate. The state of Texas funds us based on the number of kids who are in attendance on a daily basis. So, pre-COVID, Montgomery ISD, like other districts across the state, we're sitting at 95, 96, sometimes even higher percentage of daily attendance. COVID has caused that to fall off, and most districts are struggling to get to 90 or barely above 90. And so, next year, we are trying to emphasize our return to normal, pre-COVID-type attendance and attendance rules. And so, we are estimating 94.5% attendance rate for next year, which equates to $3.5 million. In addition, we have been designated as a fast-growth district. And so, that entitles us to an additional $700,000 allotment. That's how we get to that $4.2 million of additional revenue. And so, what did we do with compensation last year? This board, in October of 2020, provided a 2% across-the-board pay raise. We made that recommendation after we had balanced the budget in September. And then, in April, when the compensation plan was approved, which is why we're here tonight, an additional 5% for teachers, an additional 3% for other staff. So, last year, teachers received approximately 7% raise, and all other staff approximately 5% raise. Now, you've already done something that has impacted salaries for next year. So, you have already improved the We Are Montgomery Employee Incentive Plan. So, employees who return and are with us next year will receive $1,000 for all, every employee in Montgomery ISD, regardless of the position that they hold. And then, some hard-to-feel or high-need positions will also receive an additional $500 on top of that. So, those are one-time monies. But that was a significant investment already in our employees. And so, what we're recommending to you tonight is a $2,000 raise for our teachers, which is approximately 3.5% pay raise, and then a 3% of the midpoint for all other staff members. Also, in the compensation plan, there have been some stipend adjustments for those extracurricular duties, whether it be athletics, or academic, or whatever the case may be. You can see there, the cost is a little over $2.3 million. In addition to the compensation plan, there are some additional expenses that we have to consider. So, as a growing school district, it means we will need additional staff next year to accommodate the additional student enrollment. So, we've got that estimated to be $725,000. As you are aware, we had to come to you and ask to make a change for our cleaning services. And so, that comes with a little extra cost. You see some things like PSAT exam fees, Reading Academy, things that were needed and not necessarily funded, but were important to this district. We've also got some special ed, technology, and maintenance additions. We have CCMR coordinator, and then GT coordinator and program specialist. And for CCMR and GT, you will see that we will actually be using monies from those specific programs. So, they have a net zero impact on the budget. So, when you add the compensation plan and all of the other additional expenses at this time, that gives you a total of 3.776. So, once again, I'm a simple person, simple math. You take your 4.2 anticipated revenue minus your proposed new expenditures. And you can see, at this point, you're able to provide $2,000 for all of your teachers, a 3% raise for all other employees, and make some stipend adjustments. And you still have a little positive variance there of $424,000. So, to give a little history and to see how that, these pay raises are, have impacted where we came from. At the start of the 2020, 2021 school year, so before you gave that first pay raise in October, our first-year teacher salary was $51,000. A five-year teacher on the salary scale was $52,242, and a 15-year teacher was $57,643. Should you approve the schedule that's in front of you tonight, based on these raises, these are what those numbers will look like. So, for 22-23, a first-year teacher will now be $56,200, an increase of $5,200 since the start of the 2021 school year. Five-year, $58,615. Year is now over $62,000, almost $63,000. So, is it where we want to be? No. Is it a significant improvement from where we were? Absolutely. So, what we have been communicating to our campuses, it's more than just the money. There is actually what we're calling the package. And so, when you add on the retention stipends, so think of that teacher who got $2,000 pay raise, plus $1,000 retention stipend, that's a $3,000 increase. That new teacher starting pay of 56,2, that helps Denise on the recruiting trail. It's still not as much as we would like for it to be, but it's better than 51. We have made adjustments to the paraprofessional pay grades, clerical, transportation, and maintenance. Obviously, the pay raises, more professional development and work time built into the next-year school calendar. The thing that's probably gotten the most cheers from our employees is the two paychecks per month. And so, that will start in July. So, we will be going to paying our employees on the 5th and the 20th of each month, instead of just once a month. And then, for those staff members who have children who will be attending pre-K, there's a $100 per month discount for those services. And then, Amanda Davis and Teresa Tipton and a host of many district representatives, board representatives, have been working on a culture of respect. And there's more to come on that. But that is what we're calling the 22-23 package, and asking for you to approve tonight. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So, all good news. Is it $2,000 flat, or is it 3.5%? And so, $2,000 is a pretty close average?
For teachers, it's always easier for us to give a flat amount, because they have that step scale. And so, we have to plug a number in to make that scale work. So, that 2,000 is equivalent to a 3.5% raise.
Other questions?
I'll just make a quick comment. Mr. Lynn, I think I'm very appreciative of the fact that you opened with educating our community about the constraints that we face in the budget. And I appreciate y'all's continued work in that. But I also appreciate that you went immediately into the compensation. It shows that it's truly a priority for us on the board. It's truly a priority for y'all in the administration. And I would hope that our teacher, teacher staff, teachers and staff understand that we're working through these constraints, trying to do what we can to mitigate this problem.
And what we've tried to do is, we've gone to every campus. We've done basically the same presentation. And we've tried to educate our employees as to, and to show them, we truly are doing as much as we feel like we possibly can, and still meet the expectations of this board in providing a balanced budget. And so, that is being as financially transparent and accountable as this district can be. And so, you know, when people say, a 3.5% raise for teachers is great, why can't you do four? Well, we've shown you, we don't have much left after we've done what we've done and accounted for all the other additional expenses. So, we're trying to educate people as we go. Doesn't make everybody happy, but at least we're not hiding anything. And this, these are the numbers as they exist today.
And I think it's remarkable. We've gotten balanced budgets. We've given raises last year. We're considering it this year. We're doing a lot of things. We've given $10 million back.
We've given 10 million back to the, our fund, right? But if you go back to that slide with the bar graph and what you talked about in the community, it struck me in all of our, all of our sessions that we worked through, how much of the money that we collect in for property taxes that we don't actually keep and that has to go back to the state. That we are capped on the amount of funding. However, in addition to that, we don't see the amount of funding that other districts funds get. So all of those state, that brown, that brown stuff at the top there and then the, the kind of the green, the teal green, other local and state, we don't ever see that money. But we're still collecting, we are collecting revenues in terms of local taxes, but they cap us. So even though we've got these high appraisals that, that have just come in, we'll never see that money, simply because it, it's going to go, we're capped and it's going to go back to the state.
So keep in mind, the school finance system in the state of Texas is very complex and it is very difficult to explain to people where they feel comfortable with the explanation. Okay? But the, the basic part of it is if your local revenue goes up, your state revenue goes down. Okay? It's designed to take, you know, if you get it from one, then you're, you're getting less from the other. And so there is this push-pull with local resources and state resources. And so it is, it is a difficult balance. We are not benefited by the state formulas at this time. We've had those conversations with our legislative delegation. We've explained some of our concerns. We're not complaining. We're just trying to, once again, educate those people who represent this community on how decisions in Austin have impacted this district and ask for them to take that information back and make educated decisions in the future so that Montgomery ISD is not penalized or treated differently than other Montgomery County districts or other districts across the state.
If I could add on to that, I have appreciated our time that we have spent with our state legislators and I appreciate the fact that this board took action last year to have a legislative platform because it's hard to be upset with things that happen in our state capital or, or national capital if we have not taken the time to say, here are our priorities, here are things that we want to advocate for, but then expect them to understand that and to know that. And so we have spent a lot of time with our legislators, very much appreciated their interest in looking at a chart like this and saying, well, how is this? And there are things in both the federal formulas and state funding formulas that don't necessarily advantage Montgomery ISD, but I understand the philosophy and the idea behind them. There are some things as, just as, as we can all understand, as entities are trying to take what you currently have and make it better and you're adding new policies on to existing policies. There are some things that actually go all the way back to 2006 that happened that are not helping our district now in terms of bridging some of this gap between how we look at revenue coming in versus the state. And I'm really appreciative of our state delegation saying that they understand that and they are going to look at that with the leadership of this board. But, you know, part of why we spend so much time doing the roadshows and the town hall meetings and visiting this campus, because we want people to understand. And again, we are not complaining about how much money we have. That's not who we are and that's not who this board is. But it is a simple function when someone says, well, there's still this district paying more than you are in compensation. And the answer to that is going to be yes, because, you know, they have more revenue to bring to the table. I will challenge to find any district that has made it a higher priority under the leadership of this board over the last two years than we have to increase compensation. The salary increases we did last year, the 7% for teachers and the 5% for all other employees were the most generous employee compensation raises in this region. We don't have all the data yet for our, for our surrounding school districts, but we believe if you do take action on this tonight, that will also be able for us to be able to make our commitment to bridge that gap between where other districts were, where we were and where we are now. So as we have said, when we visit our campuses and our district offices, we are excited about the direction we're going. We think directionally, we are making progress. Are we where we need to be for our employees? Absolutely not. But it's important for us to make sure that they understand that these are the constraints and just like we say, our, our school budget is like our household budget. And so you, how much is coming in? What do you prioritize? What is that going to cost? And is there anything left over? And, you know, while $400,000 is a lot of money, $400,000 and then $80 million budget is, you know, not a lot of money. And so we, we think this is a very prudent recommendation to bring to the board. It will be, we think valued by our employees, but it, it is asking you to basically forward fund the budget.
I'd like to make one real quick comment about the last slide where you have the 2022, 23 package. I know you're big on the numbers and that's what you get excited about, Chris, but the, the last part of that, I think, doesn't need to go unnoticed and that's the culture of respect. Because being, being the son and the husband of an educator, I know what that means to them and it showed from your department all the way down, I know how hard they work and it's, it's clearly showed how important that is for you guys to get and show those, those teachers and those people at the campus level the respect and that's much appreciated.
We appreciate that. In June, this board will have a presentation from the leadership group that has been working on this. It was a cross-functional team of representatives from different campuses, departments, administrators, employees, teachers, support staff, board members, all really talking about what does a strong culture look like. And we know that it starts with a culture of respect. And so this team has spent time talking about what that looks like, that is distinctive, unique and special about Montgomery ISD. And once we define what it should be, then we can start doing gap analysis about, well, where are we on that? And then how can we make sure that every employee in our district feels valued and appreciated for the important contribution that they bring in terms of service to children? And when a employee finds himself in a position where they might feel a lack of respect, how can they access support and help and not feel like there's going to be a negative consequence to it? So we are excited about it. We think it will be something our employees will value. I will not say more than their compensation, but I think that's not an either or, it's a both and.
Other questions or comments? All right, board members, is there a motion?
I recommend the board approve the compensation plan as presented.
All right, Ms. Turner, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kirby, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained, that motion carries. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have moved into information items. There are no votes on information items. First information item is a first reading of a policy revision board, Policy DC Local-X. Mr. Hopkins has contributed to this as well as Mr. Dennison on a discussion about contract authority for our superintendent, Dr. Morrison. Anything you want to add to that?
I think you're going to get a robust presentation tonight about Goal Four and that is our commitment to attract, recruit, retain and grow great employees. And that really does start with keeping our great employees, but we will have vacancies because we will continue to grow and need to hire new staff. There is absolutely a fierce competition around trying to attract the best talent and get to that best talent early. And as Ms. Minor, our executive director of human resources, will share with you, she has been out with her team recruiting. We have already visited many teacher fairs and recruitment fairs, but we cannot do something that several of these other school districts could do, which is immediately have a great employee candidate, absolutely love everything about them, feel like they will be a wonderful addition to Montgomery ISD and offer them a contract. Okay? And that may not seem like a challenge, but when there is a, I hate to use the word war, when there is a huge competition for talent, it is. Every time we have a, a, a high-level position, for example, this board recently approved Mr. Tim Williams as the principal at Lake Creek High School. We actually had finished that process and Ms. Minor will go through our robust processes for principal selection, but we had finished that process, I think, a good eight days before the next available board meeting. And, and so that's eight days that we can't post that position. And people will say, well, why can't you just post it? Well, you know, we can't get out in front of the board. So we wait for the board to approve our recommendation, in which case you did with Tim Williams going to Lake Creek High School. But that's eight days that we're lagging behind trying to hire for Oak Hills Middle School. So if the board were to consider this policy, it simply puts us in a position to be able to be effective and, and to be able to go out and get the best talent in a very timely fashion. It changes nothing about our informing the board. As you know, we take great pride in informing the board of every hiring decision, every HR recommendation and that will continue and never waver.
Board members, are there questions about this? In the past, I have been a fairly staunch advocate of the board retaining this contract authority and I will tell you that part of my reasoning for that will become clear in item 7C when we review the human resource department, when we have the human resource department update. So I'd like to reserve one of my comments until 7C, but, you know, I'll just give you a little prelude. We have great processes in HR now and I, I really support the consideration that y'all have put into that and want to, you know, applaud y'all for those, those kind of efforts. So I will reserve one comment until 7C. Are there any other questions on this first reading? All right, then, board members, I have to move on to item 7B, which is a state requirement that the board president gets the lovely pleasure of reading, Board Members Continuing Education Credit Report. This is the most riveting part of the evening, ladies and gentlemen. Under state Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As board president, I am required to announce the name of each member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. So here we go. All board members have completed the following required trainings, post legislative updates to the Texas Education Code, team building session, that was a fun one, security, cybersecurity, identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking. So thank you all, board members, for that participation. The following board members have completed the Evaluating Student Academic Performance and Setting Goals Training, Mr. Hammond, Ms. Portman, Ms. Turner, Mr. Dennison, Mr. Hopkins and myself. The following board member is deficient in the required biennial training on evaluation of student academic performance and setting goals, Mr. Kirby. However, Mr. Kirby has scheduled this training and is completing it in a timely fashion. The board members have, the following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements, Mr. Hammond, Ms. Portman, Ms. Turner, Mr. Dennison, Mr. Kirby and myself. The following board member is deficient in meeting the additional continuing education requirements, Mr. Hopkins. However, Mr. Hopkins has scheduled the training to timely complete the additional continuing education requirements of two and a half hours. The following board members have exceeded the required amount of continuing education hours. Mr. Dennison by one hour in excess, Ms. Portman by 15 hours in excess, Ms. Turner by 16 hours in excess, you overachievers.
We're school teachers.
And myself by 17 hours of in excess.
Oh, yeah, see, now we're throwing that in there.
Let him beat you by an hour, where I am.
Ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that they don't tell you often about a school board is that there is a, a hefty amount of training to do for a $0 volunteer position. So I want to applaud the board members for completing their training and thank y'all for all that you do every day. All right, that fun bit of knowledge out of the way, let's move to item 7C, Goal Four and Human Resource Department Update. Ms. Denise Minor.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. I remember last year, it was a little earlier than this, when we presented a state review of our HR Department of Processes and it was, and I, I was proud of the data that you were reviewing, but when you commit to transparency with your community and you take the time to do a third-party analysis, whether it's good or bad, positive or negative, you put it out there and then if it's not what you want it to be, you make commitments to make it better. That has been a commitment that we've held very strongly with the hiring of Denise Minor as our executive director of human resources, leading a really talented team of people who care about us putting the very best people in front of our students and supporting those great teachers on a daily basis. And so when people ask me over my tenure, what are some of the things I'm most proud of? I have to say there are so many things, but I can't think of anything I'm more proud of than our commitment to enhancing our focus around human resources, our process procedures and the way we, we go about keeping great people in our district. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Denise Minor.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Dr. Fuller and members of the board, thank you for having me this evening. I, to begin, have two disclaimers. Last month, we teased Justin about the number of slides he had and I'm afraid I might have gone over his, so I apologize. And secondly, I would like to thank Ms. Diana Teal for my beautiful graphics. Without her, I would not have been able to do this. So thank you, Ms. Teal. Tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about Goal Four of our strategic plan. We're going to start by looking at data that was collected for our baseline data this year. Then I'm going to drill down and look at initiatives and strategies that we have developed throughout the year in support of Goal Four. And then finally, I'm going to talk about some coming attractions, which are areas that we're going to be working on for future. So I would be remiss if I didn't share with you my wonderful HR team. They had no idea I was putting their pictures on this presentation. Some of them are here right now, so thank you for being here. But my team is Teresa Tipton, who oversees benefits and employee relations. Caitlin Nichols and Diane Tomlinson are my HR specialists. Carol Reisig is my sub-coordinator. Beverly Harret is my certification specialist. Andrea Turner is our secretary that we share with finance and Laura Davis is our receptionist. The first thing I'd like to share with you is our mission in HR and it is, it states that we are committed to assisting both staff and applicants in a friendly and efficient manner. We put the human in human resources and we want to make sure that each person, whether employee or applicant, feels valued and respected. Our commitment is to develop and support a highly qualified workforce and we're dedicated to ensuring academic success for all Montgomery students focusing on recruitment, hiring, retention and employee excellence. So we'll start with performance objective number one and that's to assess the current compensation and benefit plans for comparability and competitiveness compared to other regional districts. Our first KPI is that by 23, 24, district salaries will increase to at least the 90th percentile within the region. And what you're going to find is a lot of what I talk about today, transfers and we are cross, crossed with other departments. So you're going to see some of the things that Mr. Lynn shared with you and some of the things that we may have already talked about this evening. But as Mr. Lynn shared with you, in looking at our 2020, 2021 salaries for teachers and where we'll be for 22, 23, we are moving in the right direction and you can see that there is a difference of between $5,000 to $6,000. Performance objective number two is that we will develop and implement a comprehensive approach to ensure the retention of effective employees. So our first KPI talks about the percentage of employees leaving MISD reporting a satisfactory experience and we're looking to have that be above 90% annually. Currently, our September baseline data showed that we were at 92% and this is from our exit survey that we ask our employees to take through frontline as they leave our district and we look at a couple of different questions that they answer. They answer for us whether they would recommend MISD to others and we look to see what they rate our, their overall experience with MISD. And so currently, that was at 92%, so that, that is a plus. The next thing we took a look at was our retention percentage of effective employees and we've broken this out by years of experience and then we've also broken it out by administration, teachers and paras and support staff. So we'll start with our administrators that have one to five years of experience and we currently have retained 85.7% of those staff members. And if you'll notice, our target is 90. For those on the teacher's schedule, which would include teachers, nurses, librarians, instructional specialists, with one to five years, we have retained 88.7%. And for support staff and paras with one to And for support staff and paras with one to five years, we have retained 79.3%. And so this is certainly an area we want to take a look at, and we are in hopes that because we are addressing the para-salary schedule, that we can raise this percentage. Next, we're going to take a look at these same groups with six-plus years, and with administrators with six-plus years, we are retaining 90% of those folks. For those on the teacher's schedule, we are retaining 91.5% of those folks, and this certainly mirrors the national trend. If we are able to keep teachers past that five-year mark, we see longevity with those folks, so that's good news. And then finally, our support staff in paras with six-plus years is at 78.8%. Performance objective number three is to collect, analyze, and respond to an ongoing collection of decision-making data to measure working conditions and PD that are needs among our MISD employees. So the first thing we're going to look at is whether our current employees would recommend the district as a positive place to work, and this particular data came from our third-party data that we collected back in September. And right now, 85% of our employees would recommend the district as a positive place to work. Our next KPI talks about the percentage of employees who indicate they have been provided training to meet the current requirements and expectations of their job, and we're looking to increase that annually by 3%. So again, in that third-party survey, it's at a baseline of 69%, and in conjunction with the Curriculum and Instruction Department, we have been working this year on building robust professional development for our staff, and we will continue to work on that. Performance objective number four is to develop professional learning supports and resources to enhance employee capacity and opportunity for growth. And again, the percentage of employees reporting they receive relevant job-embedded professional development, and this is not the required PD that each of our staff is, takes every fall, for instance, bloodborne pathogens and things of that nature. This is actual professional development to help them grow in their job. And the third-party survey showed that our baseline is at 74%, and we're looking to increase that by 3% each year. And then our last KPI in this performance objective is that 100% of our staff will be evaluated on an annual basis using systematic, routine, and approved appraisal tools, and we are on track to meet that 100% goal, and I'll talk a little bit more about that down the road. And finally, performance objective number five is to develop and implement a comprehensive recruiting plan with multiple sourcing strategies to obtain high-quality candidates. And the first KPI is we are looking at the number of new hires reporting satisfaction with the employee onboarding process, and this is a TASB survey that we gave to our new hires mid-year, and at this time, 84% of those folks reported that they were satisfied with our onboarding process, and again, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And then finally, we will participate in a minimum of four recruiting events in each year, and right now, we are on target to surpass that. Right now, we have either gone to or are scheduled to attend six, and I'm looking at a seventh for this summer. So now I'm going to drill down and talk a little bit about our initiatives and strategies that we have developed throughout the year, and as you know, prior to my taking this position, there was an HR audit done, and I was given that review when I took the position, and so I took time to walk through that and read through it and look at areas that we needed to work on. So a lot of what you're going to see now is based on items that we focused on in that review. So, develop, implement, and maintain a robust compensation and benefits package that will attract and benefit all staff members, and as I shared earlier, the HR department does work in conjunction with the Finance Department in developing the compensation plan, so we have been working with Mr. Lynn for the plan that he just shared with you moments ago. And then regarding our benefits, as you know, Ms. Tipton worked to reach out to all of our campuses and departments to share the Senate Bill 1444, which was the bill where we had to determine which of our insurance benefits we wanted to go to, and she conducted a survey for that and provided a recommendation to the SLT. Provide routine and systematic evaluation cycles for all of our employees. At the beginning of the year, we developed a new evaluation tool that is being used across the district for both our professional and our paras staff, so that we're all using the same tool. I developed new evaluation timelines for staff, and those were placed on HR calendars that they have access to online. I developed a comprehensive T-test calendar that was also placed online for them to refer to as they work through their T-test evaluations throughout the year, and then we did have T-pess training in the summer for all of our administration to prepare them for using the T-pess for all of our administrators. Review district grievance process to ensure fairness, transparency, and clarity. Ms. Tipton and I attended a Walsh-Gaiego webinar training for grievances, so that we were up to speed on the grievance process and policies. We reviewed each of the policies with reference to grievances, both students, community, employees, and police officers. We reviewed and updated our documents, and then throughout the year, we have assisted principals and directors when grievances were filed to give them support as they walk through those grievances. This is a big one. This particular piece, we spent a lot of time on this year. This is developing HR standards for streamlined utilization of time and resources, hiring timelines, vacancies, transfers, and staff quality, et cetera, and that's a big et cetera. We developed a district hiring practices handbook last summer, and we shared that with all of our leaders at our Leadership Retreat in July. We developed a position authorization form, which is in Frontline. What I was finding last summer was there were a lot of emails passing between people regarding new positions that campus principals would like to have, or we were changing titles, or we were adding or subtracting days on specific positions. So this is all on Frontline, and each person must go onto Frontline, fill out the form as far as what they're requesting, or whether it's a new position that senior leadership team has approved, and so on and so forth. So this way, we have this all in a repository, and we're able to track this, rather than going back and looking through emails. Next, we developed an intent-to-return form in Frontline, which we sent out in February. This helped us to plan for what we were going to be needing as we were going out to these recruiting fairs, as far as staff that were planning on leaving this, retiring, and so on and so forth. So that gave us a little bit of a jump on that. Next, we developed an MISD transfer form, so we are currently in that transfer window now, and that allows our staff, if they would like to transfer to another campus, to put that in Frontline. It goes to their current principal, so that principal touches it and is aware of that. Then it goes to the principal that they would like to transfer to. That principal touches it, and then it comes to HR. So everyone is aware that that particular person is interested in putting in a transfer. That window will close on May 2nd. We developed an excess staff form for principals. We thought we were going to have to use it, but we have had enough shifting in our staff that we haven't, but in the event that we have a campus that may have too many staff members at the end of the school year, this has provided a process for that principal so that they're able to determine who will need to be moved and sent to another campus. And then finally, Dr. Morrison touched a little bit on our robust principal selection process, so I'm just going to share a little bit with you as far as what that looks like. Once our position has been posted and our applicants are starting to pour in, we send a team to the campus, and they meet with staff, parents, and students, and they gather information on the characteristics they would like to see in that principal. We take that information back, and when our senior leadership team members do the paper screening, of which we look at all the qualifications to make sure they're qualified, we also look at those characteristics that were developed. So we're making sure that we're paper screening and choosing folks to move to that first round that meet those requirements. The first round is made up of quite a few individuals. I was fortunate enough to be involved in the Montgomery High School first round yesterday, of which we had 16 folks on that panel, because we want to make sure we're including everyone. So we had administrators, we had staff, we had students, and we had parents. So it was very interesting, and I have to say, the students that were on that panel yesterday were absolutely amazing. They asked great questions, they were thoughtful, they were involved, and it was a long day. We were there from about 7:45 until about 4:30. So it was a long day for them, and they did a fabulous job. Once they have gone through the interviews, each of our panelists score using a rubric, and then that panel pushes forward those candidates, and the senior leadership team looks at where there might be a natural break in scoring, and we determine how many of those folks were going to move to round two, which then moves in front of the senior leadership team and Dr. Morrison. There are times when we decide to also go to a round three, so that is dependent upon the candidates we're looking at to determine who we are going to select for our next principal. So, did I leave anything out, Dr. Morrison?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Minor, if you don't mind, I would like to make that comment I referenced earlier.
Sure.
That slide alone had five areas that you've developed new processes for us, whether it's intake, whether it's transfer, whether it's hiring. For me personally, I just think I smile a lot because of the work you've done, because this is documented for us now. And not only is it documented, it's available, it's clear. We're getting great feedback from the community. I received emails today of people thanking them for allowing them to be on one of these first-round panels. Students are talking to us, so I just want to underscore for the public and for the board, we do have these processes in place now, and it's what makes me feel really, really secure and safe with what's going on in HR in the way that I have not felt in a long time. And so the last thing I would say is, as you as community members, if you ever hear that, oh, they don't have processes, and they just kind of throw it together, and, you know, they just kind of hire whoever they want over there, I hope that you'll look at Denise Minor's face right now and say, no, that's not the case. That's, a lot of work has gone into this.
Absolutely.
So I want to say a sincere thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Moving on, I talked briefly about the fact that we had a survey for our new employees regarding the onboarding process. This was a TASB survey that we delivered mid-year to our new hires that started the year with us, because I wanted to make sure that we were consistent in who we were surveying and the data we were receiving. So the questions we looked at started with their hiring process, applying, being hired, going to new teacher orientation, and then the questions also went into those first few weeks of being on the campus and the in-service and training they were receiving on their campus as well. So 34 of our 37 new teachers completed the survey, and it was a lot of great data, and I'm going to be sharing this data with our principals at our Leadership Retreat in July, so they have some preparation for their in-serving in August when they hire their new teachers. And we're maintaining a comprehensive staffing model based on needs assessment and allocation of resources. This year, we developed an MISD staffing matrix for the 2022-23 allocations, and so we have been using that in SLT, and we've also shared that with our principals as far as how we're allocating those staff members at each of our campuses based on student population, and we shared a little bit about that with you earlier today. And then Skyward. Skyward is coming, and Skyward is going to allow us to have position control, which is going to be a nice thing, because it's going to allow us to track our positions, look historically at who has been in those positions. So that's going to be a nice thing for HR in particular, because Frontline did not have that. And we're actually going to be utilizing Skyward for a lot of our HR pieces that currently we're using Frontline for, so we'll have our personnel information in there, our hiring, our transfers, our benefits, and so on and so forth. So that is going to be all moving into Skyward over the summer, so that's going to be interesting. Right, Amanda? That's all I have to say about that. Monitor compensation packages to ensure competitiveness with comparison districts, and I know Mr. Lynn touched a lot about, on about this earlier during his compensation plan, but HR helped to review the TASB survey surrounding districts' salaries around us. We reviewed the current salary schedules, the pay grades or the boxes, and the mid, mid, min, mid-max for staff. So these were all areas that we looked at in conjunction with finance. And we want to partner with community stakeholders to provide annual events connecting employees with the community, so I've just listed a few here. Our Education Foundation fundraisers during new teacher orientation, we partnered with Living Savior Church, April Sound Church, and our Chamber of Commerce to provide food and all kinds of prizes and goodies. During our convocation, we had community members there, including our mayor. We had food trucks out in front, and then, of course, our Education Foundation Golf Tournament, and then this weekend is our soiree. Soiree. That sounded odd. And then we want to maintain and publish updated profiles, job description, and job descriptions for each of our positions. So we've spent a lot of time reviewing job descriptions this year. Some of them were older than others. TASB does offer model job descriptions, not for all positions, so lots of times, we are looking at other districts and developing job descriptions along with directors. So we've done a lot of that, and we have placed them in a repository for directors and campus principals to find. And then we, as I talked about earlier, we disseminate a comprehensive exit survey to staff separating from MISD, and as I said, that is in Frontline Central, and I've developed a spreadsheet of the responses, and I have shared these quite often with the board when I talk about my personnel report, and then when there are areas that are concerning, I do share those with admin as well. And we want to expand the current MISD mentoring program to support all employees and promote career advancement, and so tonight, you got to see all of our Leadership Academy folk, which was a great addition this year by Dr. Weatherly to help those staff members grow and become leaders in our district. And then we also received the T-Class Grow Your Own Grant, so we do have three paraprofessionals in our district that received this grant, and so they will be starting this fall and working on completing their teacher certification, and then we'll be working in our district as teachers, and the grant will be paying for that. So that's exciting as well. And we want to attract potential applicants using multiple recruiting, sourcing, and marketing methods. So you'll see, I've listed a few of the areas where we actually post positions, and then, as I said, we've attended quite a few fairs this year. We attended Sam Houston in the fall. We attended the Montgomery Chamber of Commerce Job Fair, where we were able to meet a lot of folks for transportation and nutrition jobs. We attended Texas State. We attended Texas A&amp;M. Tomorrow, we will be back at Sam Houston, so we'll be leaving for Sam Houston bright and early in the morning. We're going to hold our own auxiliary support fair this summer, and then I'll be attending the Gulf Coast Job Fair in Houston this summer as well. And then finally, Dr. Morrison spoke about the culture of respect, and this was led by Teresa Tipton, Amanda Davis, and Courtney Dyer, and they developed an initial project plan earlier in the year. They sent out a district-wide survey in September, and then they developed a district-wide committee to go ahead and look at those results of that survey. They visited campuses and departments and held SWAT meetings, and then they are currently working on policies and procedures that they plan to bring to SLT in April and the board in May to share what the MISD culture of respect will look like moving forward. Coming attractions. Coming attractions. These are areas that we are going to be working on for future. So again, Dr. Morrison talked briefly about our assistant principal pipeline. What this will look like is we will have, we will open an AP position in the fall and in the spring and take applicants. And this is to gather a general pool. And we will, as an SLT team, we'll probably have a smaller team that will be doing paper screening. We'll be vetting these candidates, looking at their qualifications. And then they will be put into this pipeline. And they remain in this pipeline for two years, and this is the pipeline where our principals can pull candidates from. And we're looking for folks that are not only qualified, but they also stand out to us as folks that will be future leaders as principals as well. So that's what we're looking for in this group of APs that will be in this pipeline. After two years, they drop off the pipeline, and they would need to reapply to come back into the pipeline if they haven't been chosen for a position. So that's what that looks like. I will be collaborating with tech services to update our HR website. We'll be collecting data for an end-of-year staff development needs assessment. We'll also be creating an end-of-year survey for principals to just give us some feedback on candidates that they had available to them this year, anything they would like to see differently as far as our hiring procedures and the candidates we're recruiting. In conjunction with Ms. Tipton, we will be looking to develop and expand our wellness options for our employees. And then we're going to take a look at the teacher incentive allotment and how we can attract nationally-board certified teachers and develop our own nationally-board certified teachers within MISD. Questions?
I don't know if it's a question, but it's definitely wow. You've done a lot. I mean, it's, you know...
And I haven't even been here a year.
Yeah. I...
Can't wait for five years.
It's coming up. Just wait. I mean, just wait.
I think we've all been in this whole thing with change and with, you know, focusing on our staff, our teachers, our process for hiring, and our process for promotions and all those sorts of things. So you all have just done a wonderful job with that, and I think it's going to make a huge difference, and it already has made a difference. It adds a lot of transparency to what we're doing. It also, I think it builds morale within our teams. So I think from a leadership perspective, you're setting the pace and doing a lot of good things. I also think that the culture of respect and working towards developing a culture that people really, really feel comfortable with and really feel engaged and happy to be where they're at, and they feel valued, that's really important. I think you've done tremendous work there.
Thank you.
I have a quick question from way back in the presentation.
Okay.
One of the lower percentage numbers was retention of paraprofessionals. Have we pinpointed any ideas yet on why that number is low, or is that something we're still looking into investigating?
Yes. I would say salary is number one. And, you know, unfortunately, we do see turnover in those areas. I think, you know, we talked about the fact that we've addressed the Paris salary schedule. And I also think that two paychecks a month is going to be extremely helpful, because, you know, when they first start working with us, they don't see a paycheck for quite some time. And so we have heard information from them regarding that, too, so I think that's going to help.
I want to express as well how excited I am about everything you just presented, how much work has gone into that, because it was clearly needed and necessary that that was done. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Miner, I have two. First of all, one rendition of Ms. Turner's question. One of the areas that we had a yellow on was professional development. And could you maybe paint your vision for what professional development in the district might look like in the next, your second year?
Well, I think it's twofold, and I think it is a partnership with curriculum and instruction, because I think that during the year, I've been able to supply some training with Leadership Academy and at the Leadership Retreat. I've talked about investigations. I've talked about having critical conversations with our employees. I would hope to bring more of that from an HR perspective. But I also think that curriculum and instruction, it has a plan also to be rolling out more professional development. I know we've added more days to the calendar. So I think, again, you know, it's going to be in combination with both HR and curriculum and instruction.
All right. Dr. Furlough, real quick on your question, and I think it's just important as part of our commitment for the board to have the proper oversight of the district as you're elected to do, is that we present data and constantly update you about progress on the strategic plan and the multiple number of KPIs that we've set. And I say this because you all know this, but, you know, as anybody in attendance for the first time at a board meeting or anybody watching it after it's been taped, when we set those KPIs, we set them to be aspirational but achievable. And so in other words, we did not set a low bar, we set a high bar. And we hope that more often than not, as we report departmental success or success on each of the goals, that there is a lot of greens, which means we're right where we thought we would be. But there are also going to be yellows, because for various reasons, we got close, but we didn't quite hit those targets. And that allows for a thoughtful, great conversation amongst our board about what are the plans, what are we going to do to fill that gap? And then there are going to be times when there are reds, and then the board can ask, well, why is it red? What's the plan? Is it a budget issue? Is it a training issue? Is it a technology issue? And again, that's where we make sure that we are keeping our commitment to transparency and accountability, which is critically important. On professional development, it's been a kind of a focus of mine for quite some time about how do you measure professional development? Because, yeah, give a training. If there's a snappy presenter, and they do a great job, and you do a Survey Monkey, 95% of everybody says, awesome training, you feel great. But if you never see it in use, then it really wasn't a great training. So then you're like, well, we got to go measure it. So we go into the classrooms, and we see how many times we see that new technique being done. And even if it's 80% of the time, ultimately, it's, did it move the needle on student achievement? And so this is a very nuanced issue that we care deeply about. But at the end of the day, what we know, the reason why those are not as high as we would like the rankings is because you can do one-and-done professional development, or you can commit to job-embedded, ongoing professional development, and that's what we want to do. And that starts with really asking our employees what they feel they need versus what their jobs require. And then it's up to us to try to deliver that in collaboration with our campus leaders and our departmental leaders. So it's a lot of work in that area to go.
Great. Well, my last question is not necessarily one I wanted to end on. Maybe I should have asked it a little bit earlier. But we hear a lot nowadays about teacher burnout, teacher resignations. People are calling this the great resignation. How are we faring in Montgomery? And then also, what are we doing about all that?
Well, I have to share that I'm very proud to be a part of Montgomery ISD, because it is a destination place, and I'm seeing that with the applicants we're receiving, which is very exciting. I hope that our recruiting endeavors are helping to also bring folks here as well. Currently, we have about 18 openings at the elementary level and about 22 openings at the secondary level, so very manageable at this point in the year. Of course, we don't know what's going to happen over the summer. But again, you know, I know, like Dr. Morrison had shared, one of our principals who shared at our meeting last week was so pleased with the caliber of candidates that she was looking at in our pool. So, you know, I think constantly being out there, recruiting, advertising, you know, that's what we're going to be doing, because there's not a large pool of teachers out there right now, and there are a lot of people after them, so...
Well, I hated to even ask that question. A lot of great work's been done tonight here. I would challenge our board, and I'd actually challenge everybody in the room and anybody listening, do something nice and do something kind for a teacher and a staff member and our administrators in the next few weeks as we make the long dash towards the end of May. And I'd ask that we all pick them up and lift them up. It's a tough time right now, and anything we can do as a community to support is greatly appreciated. Are there any other questions? Are there any questions on the monthly financials? With no additional information items or action items on the agenda, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.